Number three, any citizen is there to be heard. Number four, consideration of possible action on approving minutes.
So, motion.
I've got a motion and a second, all in favor. All right, all opposed, motion carries. Number four, consideration, or number five, I'm sorry, consideration of possible action on approving ODOT reimbursement claims to Cokesfield Service for right-of-way services for Luther Road Project, JP, blank, 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 an amount of $1,350 and $835.
That's eight thousand.
Well, it sure is. Sure is, I'm sorry. Eight thousand.
Mike, you need to sign with the yellow plus the board.
I was fixing to argue with you here.
This should complete.
Take them to do on camera.
This should complete all of Luther, I think. All of Luther, right away, now, it's hard.
Okay.
So that $8,350 is actually for three different parcels.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. That was, if it had been for one, I would have been a bit more curious.
I like the $835 more than.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's all that CI are being.
They've been way slow about paying them too. Speed up, maybe if they got them.
I'd entertain a motion on this.
Oh, make a motion.
Well, second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Number six, consideration of possible action on approving general mutual cooperation agreement with Oklahoma County for construction, maintenance, and repairs on mutual county line roads.
And just as a repressure, this is what they came up with last year. This is just the overall that says that there's a project on a county line road between Oklahoma and Logan that they can work together on that.
I move we approve that, and then I've got to comment after.
All second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
My comment is, there's a part of Waterloo Road there that joins Oklahoma County that's a part of Edmond City Limits, apparently. And when I talked to the county commissioner over there, he says that we'll have to coordinate with the city of Edmond on any, anything there. So, we probably need to look at doing some sort of coordination with them. Because there's about five, six miles of Waterloo Road here that is in City Limits. He doesn't want anything to do with it.
Yeah, I'd say if the city annexed it, they ought to maintain it.
At least half of it.
Yeah. I agree. Something we'll check into.
They're drawing the tax base from it, I guess it's.
They'll be flipping the bill. Good morning, Sheriff.
Good morning.
How are you?
Well, I'm good, Sheriff.
Better than I deserved. Number seven, consideration of possible action on approving physical year 17, 18 detention transportation agreement with the Office of Juvenile.
This is their first of two options on the main agreement that was signed with them last year. There's two copies here, and they're both marked.
What kind of first?
So what's the, I wonder, what's the options here?
Now, they're exercising, when we renewed the contract with them last year, it came with two options to exercise renewals. So they're exercising the right, the first option to renew. This is where the sheriff's department gets reimbursed for transporting the juveniles. In fact, that ties back into one of these other items where we're going to approve the detention transportation claim. That's, that contract ties to that.
Do you want reimbursed?
Yes, sir.
Can we, can we transport them on foot down Broadway and have them pick up some trash on the way through there?
Well, we can look at that. I don't know. Probably rely on it, probably. I move we approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number eight, consideration of possible action on approving 17, 18 contract with task for petroleum valuation services for the assessor office.
It has not changed its $40,000, same as last year.
Can we try to negotiate that then? Full Trump almost negotiated.
All right, Donald, go for it.
Hey, I can do it.
I would assume that our assessor thinks how it's on her behalf has, it doesn't have.
Wonder what's it, Sheriff. I guess we can go with Trish's, get a copy.
Of what?
Well, they've got all the, okay, provide map layer file with all the pipeline segments mapped, displaying when available, pipe size, type year, line number, project owner, operator. So it says they're mapping them? So how would we go back and copy them then?
I assume all you have to do is ask for it.
Assessor. Oh, definitely ask for it directly.
I move we approve.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Nine, consideration of possible action on approving resolution of ETR renewal, 17, 18 physical year.
Mr. Chairman, we're renewing this while we're waiting for a couple of our reimbursements. And once that happens, we'll be sending all the ETR funds back that we've got from District One back to the CDC.
I move we approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Get a little ETR.
What is ETR?
Emergency.
Transportation revolving.
Revolving, yeah. Basically, funds that they loan to you when you have a big project, like utility relocations and all that stuff. It was used for the Coltrane Road Project starting back in 2012, ETR funds. We used to pay for that, and then we get reimbursed back into that fund, and then we return the fund and we get finished with it. And we are finishing with it.
Borrow the money from ODOT, then when ODOT pays us, we reimburse ODOT.
Of course, they get a 6% handling fee.
Oh, sure. Don't need to anymore. Number 10, consideration of possible action on all annual receipt of notice of tort claim from Edward Klein and Board of the Hackel County Claims. Did we receive it?
Yeah.
I move that we receive it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Number 11, consideration of possible action on approving detention transportation claim for April 2017. Pardon this right in, General Counsel. Motion.
I have an handkerchief.
They voted for it, get all of them. I second the handkerchief.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Chairman, we have nothing for 12 and 13.
Okay, then 14.
I think we'll probably have some discussion on that.
Okay. 14, consideration of possible action on upgrading changes to our security of courthouse. New Sheriff?
Now, um.
Actually, I asked to have this put on the agenda, and with the board's approval, I'd like to turn this item over to our clerk to discuss some of the issues we have with the, with the front end of the courthouse as far as security and some, maybe some improvements we need to make.
This came up, as y'all are aware, I sent an email out that, I forget what day it was, this last week, and when I came in at 5:30, the doors, the front doors to the courthouse were not only unlocked, but ajar. We found them unlocked before, but this time they were actually ajar. I know they were locked at 4:30, the security deputy always actually locks them at 4:30, so somebody coming in after hours, which we have many people with keys and access, that's normal, failed to lock it and/or double-check it to make sure that it had, had locked. The doors and cells are aged, and, and we've had them repaired repeatedly. They're an old-fashioned pin-drop system, the pin drops with the key. I think that it's probably the time has come that we need to look at changing those out to a more modern-style door that, that we can have a, a better idea that it stays locked when it's supposed to. Bear in mind, we have actually three doors to the courthouse, they're all key-to-like, so I think anything that we change, we would need to look at, at what we would do with those other two doors. I did talk to Damon about this, just to confirm, because there had been a schedule set in the sheriff's office that during the night, some of the employees would take a walk around this building, this building, and, you know, kind of look at some things. So I did talk space with Damon, he said that he would make sure that that continued, to kind of do that. Our, our biggest problem with what we have is that people are just going out and not double-checking things.
So what kind of door are you talking about?
Well, I think there's a lot of options out there that I'm not familiar with. I personally would like to see something that would be more along the lines of a key code or, or a fob, such as the sheriff's office uses. Not only can they be tracked better, right now, for us to change a key, we actually manually produce keys and pay for that cost every time something happens. I think if you go into something a little more current, that's easier done. But I, I know it's going to mean replacing the doors themselves.
What would you say, Sheriff?
Well, the beauty of the fob system is you can set timers on it, so at 4:30, whatever you want to set it at, those doors are locked. You have to have a fob to get back into it, once that door shuts, it's locked. The, one of the issues is somebody, be it issue whatever, that monitors that for holidays and stuff like that, and you can set the time, or a certain time during the morning time, it, it automatically unlocks. There's pros and cons to that.
How does, and I, and I don't know over there, because we have to have the emergency outs, so that it, are your doors that way too? Will they, from the inside?
Yes, all of our doors, you just push them in.
Okay, I couldn't remember, because we have to be able to do that. I, I'm trying to remember who does your door work, I mean, we have it, we can look at it.
Yeah, it's kind of hard.
I don't anticipate it to be a cheap fix, especially when, when you're looking at the double doors at the front. I know in the past, there was talk about replacing the doors and maybe taking them to a half-glass door, and then I know that, that at that time, some members of the sheriff's department didn't want to go to a half-glass, they liked the idea of the full glass, just because with the security deputies there, it gives them a much better feel to sight. But I, we need to do something, we can't continue. This is not the first time, even in the last six months, that I've come in so early and found an issue.
See, yeah, there, all of the, there's a lot of different ways to do this, and working on secure data centers, there's things called mantraps that are probably the most expensive, and that's a rotating tube, where you punch in your code, you walk in, and it closes and then opens through the, so it's a one-time thing. That, that's probably the most expensive and, and most intrusive, but just the regular magnetic locks, like I think the sheriff uses, would be a great addition to the front of the place.
Yeah, we don't, ours aren't a mag-type lock.
Okay.
Ours are a, a striker lock. So basically, on a mag lock system, where it has a mag up there that actually secures the door, to where you have to have a release of some sort to exit that door. Ours being striker plate only, as soon as you push that bar, twist that.
The, the arm, the plate works better than.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
And it's probably less expensive than a mag lock as well.
As far as I, as far as I know, it is.
Right.
I'd say get some quotes, and see what we can do.
See where we're at.
Would you work with me on that?
Sure.
Thank you.
All righty, 15, consideration of possible action on utilizing inmate labor for grounds maintenance and other county projects.
This is another thing that came through. The trustees maintain all the, the grounds for the sheriff's building and, out, all around there. One of the deputies that works with the trustees in that came and, and asked me about using the riding mower that the county owned that's been in storage since we started using a maintenance company. Since they had access to a riding mower and not push mower, it's not taking them near as much time to keep those grounds. And so, the deputy wanted to know about if, if you all would be interested in using trustee help for the grounds maintenance for this building, the courthouse building, and then not having to pay a service to do that. I spoke with the sheriff about it, Damon said that, that he was great with it. I think the only concern that was brought up was being sure that we have that available with trustees, because not always do we have trustees available for that. So that would be the only concern, as far as I know.
Well, I think as, you know, as far as we can schedule the mowing, you know, as to when we're going to be doing that, we can make sure we have trustees available.
So we'd say on top of it, you know, but.
Yes. The, the only thing that I see as far as an expense goes is like some equipment, like an edger, to actually edge everything, make it look nice and clanging, as to turn it use over years and do it. And I think we can do as good a job if we have the right equipment to do it.
So there's, there's a cost savings there that would pay for the equipment, it sounds like to me.
In one month?
Yeah.
I, I think we're currently paying about $650 a month. Now, the company that, that we're using also keeps all the spraying done, and, and I think that that would still be an option, that we go ahead and have them maintain the spraying schedule, that, that go over to yous and then.
I say we do it.
I second.
Sounds good. I move that we approve.
I second.
Mark, you've got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, all opposed, motion carries. But on the same token, Sheriff, I was curious, the other day, I've been doing a little project down at the fairgrounds on the road. Would there be an option that if they had some painting or something to do, that we could utilize the inmates down there as well?
Yes, the one thing that we would have to do, and me and Mark have talked about this, is, is get somebody jailer certified, because once you're jailer certified, then you can maintain those inmates. Because we, you know, we stand a lot of liability just to get into you guys and you guys go out, because there's things that you got to be aware of, that legally you can do and can't do with them. But we're looking at, at trying to use that workforce as much as we possibly can, because it benefits us and it, and it benefits them.
Damon, could you, could you kind of go over what the requirement, the training requirements are for one of our folks, one or two of our people to do that?
Basically, what you have to do is you have to attend the general certification train. We teach that in-house. It's basically, you go over the state, state jail codes, and once you, you know, we get you trained, comfortable to be able to take the test, the state comes in, actually administers that test. I mean, I can get you all the material and stuff like that. In fact, OMAG is the one that, I know that's kind of a, not a good thing here, but they provide the training for it, and that costs us anything, it's one of the things they do for us. But, but we've got several of our new staff that, that, that we're going to have to get trained in that, so I can get you guys information if you guys have a designated personal order. It used to be a three-day school that you had to attend, but over the last few years, they've allowed agencies to, to teach it themselves through our instructors, and the state just comes in and takes, takes a test. The state comes in and administers the test.
I wanted to get ready, let me know, now, so we're a couple guys.
Hi, uh.
Second.
Just so that you all are, know for sure, Paul, our per onsite maintenance here, has taken that, so we, we have one person that, that has.
Yeah, Paul will come by and get an inmate or two and go and do things around the buildings and stuff like that, so.
What, what would happen, let's say, say that we utilize them at the fairgrounds, and we was trimming trees or something, what about the liability?
It's ours. Kind of grows the liability of it.
The insurance, I mean, medical liability, that kind of stuff, yeah.
So would they fall under our workman's comp, or how would that work?
I don't think they would, because they're not on the payroll, they're not considered an employee, they're considered a resident, so we just.
Well, it'd be, be the same if one of them slipped and fell in the shower and broke off or something, yeah.
Our, our, our medical contract would have to cover that.
So it's still covered at the fairgrounds, or?
Yeah, they're still in our custody. The one thing that I would suggest, if, if you start doing it, just like with these guys, I saw a guy, one of our detention deputies had one of our guys out, you know, and was, was weed-eating, edging, he didn't have all the safety goggles, he didn't have any of that stuff, I was like, here, please, huh, because last thing we need to do is be paying for an eye. And we need to make sure that these guys have the proper equipment.
Sure.
You know, gloves, boots. We're working on, on getting some of that stuff as we start to use them more, to make sure that they are protected from what we would protect our people from.
Yeah. They sell them boots down here at the Surplus, by the box stores.
Yeah, we're going to go down there and fix them up.
I think it'd be a good deal, but hopefully the fairgrounds, you know, they can utilize some of them.
Oh, yeah.
All righty. 16, consideration of possible action on approving the following permits, road crossing permits. Oklahoma County Rule 1. Let's see again.
Yeah.
Yeah, they called. Tell me about that. Yeah, they're going to go under sewer, I think, yeah, sewer for that pipeline company that come through. What, their mobile buildings, their.
Was that a motion?
Yeah, yeah, make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All opposed, motion carries. 17, consideration of possible action on approving the consent agenda items.
I'm so concerned.
Troy, that portion, Mike. So we said you got $650 a month.
I expect a percentage of that to be returned.
Or.
I expect we'll pay for it.
I don't think OMAG gives it away either. I see a hook in the deal.
Triple hook.
I'm going to think they don't end those. At this point, there's no dollars in prison. I know. I bet you get this now. You should have brought it next time.
Instead of frequent flyer, it's frequent buyer.
That's right.
You know, I was out of Custer County, looking at this distribution funds. I was out of Custer County, and yesterday picked up a mower that we got from them, and their road crossing permits, they, they brought in almost $30,000 in their crossing permits in that one district.
What did they charge you?
I, well, I didn't get that defense of them, because it's, I can find out, I mean, that's not a problem, but I, I just thought that was interesting, if they get more road crossing permits than two districts getting, owing them money and getting finished with. Yeah.
That's why Cleveland District County is eight, theirs is one month, over $100,000 in road crossing.
Of course, their, their district too, Custer County, surrounded by wind turbines everywhere, I mean, they're everywhere out there.
What's he have to say about the wind turbines, he ever make them out?
Yeah, said they pay, pay a nice fee, that's about all he'd say on it.
I think they're receiving a nice fee as well. Oh, yeah, yeah.
The tax kickback they give. That's what I hear.
It's going away though, right?
Sure does. T set. I'm amazed we got any of that. They've been spending it on television commercials, hurting, right?
They get about $20,000 a month.
Sure do. Yeah, if they quit spending all that money on television commercials, we could, they're pretty. They're pretty expensive. But, what was it, State Treasurer runs that commercial about lost funds or unclaimed funds. Yeah.
But I think on that one, they actually say on there or written that it's, they don't use state mon- money to pay for that. I don't know what money they do use, but...
Unclaimed property. It's not really state money. That's the thing, see.
Yeah, they're just the trustee of it.
Right. It's like the difference between appropriate fund and cash fund. Sort of. Sorry about that.
There's always at least one.
Yep.
Aye, it's my fault. So I sat down there and still... Easy to do.
So sales taxes will what?
Maybe 10.
About to start on days.
Not that one, that money. That's April money.
Oh, that's April money. Okay.
Hey, you need to sign down below too.
So I can strike through like the rest of you do?
So we'd have a match.
I want to do that to them. I want the match. Is that it on the consent?
That would be it.
Really?
I mean, we approve the consent agenda. Second, and all.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? 18, any citizens daring to be heard? Hear none. 19, comments, announcements by the board? Only, only thing I was going to say is, not that I'm trying to get the fairground business or anything, but maybe once a year, we'll go down and inspect the fairgrounds and kind of see. It might entice us to maybe invest a little more money that way on some projects.
I agree. Kind of get a better perspective of things.
We may kind of, if you haven't been there in a while, I mean, you just don't think about it. I just thought maybe we ought to start visiting the fairgrounds once in a while and talking with the fair board and see if there's anything we can do to upgrade. It's the only thing I get. We got Plains Pipeline coming through the county. And they started going through my place. Got a little piece of that. Otherwise, I don't have anything. Anything?
We got about three, three and a quarter miles of rug we're going to be paving, starting this summer. Whether it is this summer, as soon as it dries out and, uh, over Broadway on west of Simpson, Simpson, west of Broadway. And then we've got a mile between Coltrane and Bryant on Simmons that we're going to pave. And then we've got that middle mile, Forest Hills, we're going to pave this year. So we've got three miles, three and a quarter miles we're going to lay down ourselves. And appreciate the help on the, on the mile and a quarter of Bryant coming north this...
No problem.
Last month's money. We appreciate the help on that. That's all I have.
If you could be getting that piece of prairie ground here shortly, should...
Yeah, yeah, we're getting it fixed up, getting the clothes in.
Sweet.
Alrighty, number 20, consideration of possible action on agenda.
Some move.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.